Baron.
Ron Baron.
Ron Baron.
Here we go.
Okay, and we're working on updating the town zoning.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, I didn't see it.
So what I have, if I'm all set to go, just again, I'll reintroduce myself. My name is Ron Baron. I am the Land Use and Zoning Manager with CMRPC. I've been here for a grand total of a month and a half. Before that, I was working in Washington DC and before that, I was working in CMRPC. So I lived, worked here in Berry and in the region for about almost five years. Left for a bit, you know, come back because you all are a lot more fun than Washington DC.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah, it is, it is. See anything on television, but okay. What I want to go over tonight is the, this project that I know got started under my colleague Tina with you guys. I inherited it from her, so she could focus on master plan project. I wanted to get it started, talk about the project goals, talk a bit more about, a little bit about the background with prior planning, what it is that we're trying, we're hoping to be able to implement with this plan. And then very quickly go over the project tasks that are in the grant and as well as deliverables and timelines. And then the rest of it, I wanted to have a discussion with you all about some of the ways that we're going to run the project, what you'd like to get out of it, if there's anything that's happened since the contract was originally written that you need us to know about, because we can, we can be pretty flexible on these things. As far as the project goals, obviously, many of you probably know that CMRPC worked, we had the town to develop this project. It was funded by the Community One Stop Program at the state. The object of it is really to pull in some of the goals from prior planning that the town has done, try to modernize and streamline the zoning bylaws to try to make them a little bit easier to manage and a little bit easier for the town to manage as well as for the residents. We want to see if it could reflect some more of the current best practices in planning. We want it to make sure that it is aligned with new state laws, since obviously in the last year, a lot of things have changed with Chapter 48 and zoning act at the state level. Like ADUs, MBTA community is obviously, MBTA community doesn't affect you guys thankfully, but it's a big issue that's coming up and it's been a lot of different issues. So that's one of the things we want to try to get out of this is try to make sure that everything is aligned with the current law. And then we want to get the opportunity to try to get some community input while we're doing this process so that when we get to town meeting, hopefully, there won't be too many surprises that people will find. And as I had said earlier, before the cameras are rolling, is that what we want to do with this is we want to do a thorough review of the zoning, zoned bylaw. Took five years not saying bylaw when I was living in DC and now I gotta go back. The same thing, I kept calling the National Mall, the National Common, because it's, anyways. So the, yeah, we want to take the, what was in those plans, we want to do a diagnostic, we want to take all of these recommendations and incorporate them in a form that you can then take to town meeting with the hope of being able to pass some of all of them. And it'll be up to you to decide what format that takes. Do you want to do one giant warrant, do you want to do one big change? If you want to do piecemeal changes, what our job will be is to help you identify what the changes will be, what you want to do, and then help you package it in a way that you can then take it to town meeting and put it up. The next couple of slides are more informational. It's just kind of talking about some, a couple of the big plans that we had looked at, that you all had done, and what influenced the tasks that went into this. We don't have to go through them with a lot of detail, but you know, there was some things that were highlighted, such as in the Economic Development Plan that was done in 2019, called for supporting economic development through zoning reform, revitalizing village centers, talking about doing more cluster and mixed use type of zoning, so that's sort of the things that we're looking at with that. And it's very similar with some of the stuff that came out of the Phase One of Master Plans that you all had worked on. Again, talking about trying to do, adding some kind of housing while preserving the role of character was very important and that came out of that plan too, and that's something that we really want to be able to work with. You want to make sure that whatever we recommend is going to reflect the goals in that plan. Moving on to the project tasks, there's four, excuse me, three main tasks that were in the scope of work. The first one is looking, is doing background research and analysis of what we're looking at is again, prior planning, zoning efforts that have happened, changes that you guys have tried to implement over the last couple of years. We want to also take a look at the historic development patterns. And one of the, what this is entailing is looking at older houses and certain, on a neighborhood, neighborhood basis, really stuff that was developed pre-zoning and see if there's anything that we can pull out of that to try to give us some guidance as to, like say, the village centers. If you wanted to be able to add more housing to the village centers, what's a way that you can do it in a way that will preserve the historic character? Because a lot of times you'll look at the zoning and you'll see all of these great old houses and then you'll look at the dimensions and you'll realize that there, you couldn't rebuild them, you couldn't build them from scratch. So maybe there's something we can get out of that, that can try to help influence this so that we're not creating really dramatic change in an area where there's already a lot of history and people are really comfortable with the way it looks. So that's sort of the target of that, that task. There is going to be some public participation, that's something we're going to have to talk about at the end of this, what kind of public participation you would like to see. We have a couple of options we can do with that. And then also, we're continuing to research best practices and other model bylaws as well as getting up to speed with the changes on the master law with the changes to 48 that happens here. What we're going to do in Task Two is essentially just a breakdown of every section of the zoning bylaw, what we're going to look at, what we're going to try to get out of it. This is consolidated obviously, because there's about seventeen different tasks in that one section, so. So the only other thing I wanted to highlight is that again, there's, this is going to include considering new topics that came out of changes to 48. And as well as, we will be helping with mapping any changes to the zoning map that come out of this. We will assist with any planning board hearings that you will have to do in order to get it to town warrant, to town meeting, and also assist with creating the language for the warrant as we settle it. As far as the deliverables, we are going to produce, help you produce the bylaw text, again, in a form that you can take to town meeting. We'll do the maps and everything would be provided in an editable Word document format so that if you want to make any changes after the end of this project, you have that ability to do so. As far as timeline, we're a little bit, we're getting a little bit late, but it's, we would have, we were hoping to kick off at the start of the summer, now the end of the summer, but we're still, we still have plenty of time. The project, the contract runs until June of 2026, the end of June, that's where the grant money comes from. So what we are anticipating is that between now and the end of this year, we will be working on the Task One tasks. We'll be working also simultaneously on the finishing the zoning diagnostic, which had gotten started prior to this. Tina actually did already start going through and making comments in the zoning bylaw. We need to just complete that. And when we get to, after the new year, that's when we will need to be bringing recommended changes to the planning board. We'll be able to discuss those. And then finally, when we get to the end of, around May and June, is when we'll have the actual, we'll have to have the text for the, for town meeting set up. That's a little bit of a moving target, because you all have to tell me when your town meeting is, because I know June is prime town meeting season.
We'd want it by the end of May.
You'd want it by the end.
Because what, sometimes our annual town meeting is like two weeks into June. Or public hearings start for that and I always get frustrated when like somebody doesn't actually give you the bylaw to look at until the last minute.
That may actually be getting earlier though, that meeting, I mean, the town meeting, yeah.
We used to do it like the second week and then in the last, I don't know, five or six years, they started doing it almost the last week for whatever reason.
I heard they want to be first.
That's what I've heard.
End of April, is that how much?
Yeah, put us behind the eight ball the last time, budget wise.
Yeah, so that's actually what, what I was thinking hearing that is that we would probably then want to have at least draft recommendations by the end of April so that we can put it together, so that you can put it together and then have the time to be able to get some sort of feedback on it. One of the things that, that we were looking at, because we have, is a sort of a compressed timeline. Obviously, it's, it's a good amount of time, but it's still a lot to do within, you know, less than twelve months. So one of the things we were considering is we have the capability to put information about what we're doing on the website and then embed feedback on it. So for instance, we could create a page right now that has all the town goals from the plans that we're looking at and just start that process of getting people, giving people the opportunity to weigh in. And we can do that as we're going along with various changes that we're recommending so that by the time we get to say, end of April, May, we have, we've been collecting information all the way along and then we have the possibility of holding some in-person meetings or some hearings in May that will be able to show, that will be able to get more feedback and get more substantive feedback from people who can't participate online. So that was one of the things I was thinking, I don't know if you had any thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So the other part, like, that was basically it as far as information to you. The part that I wanted to do now is take a few minutes. I have a list of questions I'd love to ask you guys to get this started and then, you know, if you have any initial questions for me, I'm happy to answer them now. Yep?
I, I have one because it's definitely hit us fast and hard this last. We may want to see if we can get a bylaw drafted for our special town meeting. That usually occurs, I think, in November-ish. So if that is the case, is that something like where when we have the next meeting, we can talk about the specifics of these things and see if that fits a timeline or how we'd go about it?
So which, what kind of?
It's battery energy storage. We've got solar regulations, we have nothing on batteries, that are just battery alone developments.
Okay, so if it was, when is it in November?
Well, it varies depending on how quick they get their act together, but I don't think we've done well much, what, maybe the second week in November is about the earliest they've been able to do it recently.
If it's something specific like that, where it's just looking at a battery energy storage bylaw, that we could probably handle that kind of turnaround.
Am I wrong in saying that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
There's another town that we're doing this with and may have a similar thing where they've got a specific, they've got a mall that's being deconditioned and they want us to do that first since they can get it on special town meeting. So we can definitely accommodate that. The bigger changes like, you know, the trying to figure out how to streamline it, make it more user-friendly, that kind of stuff, I think it's going to take more time than November. We'll probably need the rest of the year for that, but I think that kind of, adding that kind of bylaw would be fine. I think that would work.
Even too, I guess, if we're going to be doing a greater revision, if we could kind of get some fundamental, you know, stops in place and then knowing that we could go back and fine tune it.
Oh yeah, right, like.
So it doesn't need to be, in a sense, like a perfect solution, but at least it needs to be something that we can implement that would be practical. Because then again, as we're going through with the broader bylaw, we can always kind of see how that initial bylaw works out and it'd give us a pretty, pretty quick turnaround to adapt it.
Yeah, and that's, I'll have to check with my colleagues, because I know that that's an issue that we've been working with, with other towns. And before I left, it was one that was just starting to bubble to the surface. Because I left, the last time I was physically here was right before COVID and we were getting all kinds of requests for that at that time. So I, I think by, we should have some good examples that we could work with. I could make it a little bit easier for you guys to get started. I think that should be fine. That was actually one of the big topics that I had, so since we're on it, I might as well keep that open. Are there any other pressing zoning issues that have come up that you feel need to be addressed first? Especially if there's a special town meeting, if there's anything else that you feel like we should, we should try to tackle?
I don't think we've got anything in particular. It's been pretty quiet out here lately besides that.
So my other question was, you know, there's some ways that the, you know, communities work differently with us, different types of projects, so I'm curious what you all would prefer in terms of what the working relationship was. Some towns will put together like an ad hoc committee with one planning board member, one conservation committee member or something, or they will just have, they'll designate somebody from the planning board to be our point of contact. Other communities will request that we come to at least one planning board meeting a month and provide an update. So I'm open to working with however you would be most, most comfortable. So if you, you know, it's up to you all what you would like us to do.
I think once a month, coming in would be pretty convenient, because then everybody can kind of get a sense of where we're at and if you had one contact that you're working with, you'd need more immediate feedback than, than a once a month update would be sufficient.
We generally meet the first and third Tuesday of each month. Would we want to look at, so where are we at now in the month? So would we want to look at more like the, like?
That one's over. That's gone.
Oh, that's 2024, that explains it, okay. That's why it wasn't making sense, okay.
I was looking at it, I was like.
But I do believe I can work with that, because it's one day off. Because Monday is Labor Day, the first. So if I look at it that way, then what are we looking at around that? The sixteenth, is that the? Oh, we, that's the Tuesday night over town hall, oh yeah.
Good day to go.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be bad, because you would get a lot of feedback from the town about battery energy storage. So if you just wanted to hear that and then you could give a little update, either just before or just after of what happened in the month.
It'd really be a good time to get as much feedback from residents in town to at least let them know that we're working on a grander scheme too.
Yeah, and then I was going to ask if you want the town hall, did you want the senior center? So you can think about that.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out that internet connection. If we're going to try to figure out how to use a laptop to record.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing at the town hall before you said to log in.
Yeah, so there's no Wi-Fi there either?
No, that's my understanding, and I don't know about the senior center. I'm assuming.
Yeah, I don't know if, I've got a signal for a hotspot either.
For the Berry Gazette, so I need to know, like.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I think town hall is, you know.
Like that one better?
Yeah, I mean, it's what people are a little more familiar with.
We just have to figure out how to get the laptop to work.
Okay.
If we can get a good cell signal, I can use my phone as a hotspot, it won't kill me.
Yeah, I mean, whoever, whoever's phone has the best signal.
The senior centers, you know, the echoes in there are just.
Yeah, it's not really.
It's kind of rough.
And we're already questioning the, the camera and microphone that we're not sure we're going to have. We're trying to figure that out, so. We're working through it, it's something that we've been working on for about four years.
I'm sure somebody could figure out how to put it live on Facebook. I hear people do that stuff nowadays.
Yeah, I.
So I think there's one way, we can record it or if we can't record it, then hopefully people just show up, so. But I think that's a better venue, it's more, seems more accessible to people. And I think, yeah, the acoustics are much better.
I heard they have it posted there, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. All right, well, I can get the details from you.
Yeah, yeah.
And we already talked about the options for community input. And then, so other, so you were saying with the regular board meetings are the first and third? Did you say Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Baron holidays. What do we normally do, just push it one day out if there's a random holiday on a Tuesday?
We usually just cancel.
We cancel to the vacation.
I forget, I was just, there's not a lot of holidays on Tuesday usually, but.
Unless it's something pressing, then we will respect.
If it doesn't matter that we need to address, then we can usually work around that, but otherwise, yeah, it's usually just canceled.
You said with town meeting dates and warrants, it was try to get everything ready by the end of May. Is the, is your target?
The final draft so we can tell the whole public. You have a week or two to look at this and be prepared for the meeting.
If anything changes uncertainly, we'll try to notify you as possible.
So we'll try to target, oh, sorry.
I thought it was April.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, we will try to target having our drafts done by the end of April so that we have May for the, to be able to produce them for.
Okay.
Is that tight?
Depends what changes.
Yeah, well, I don't see them doing it any sooner than, like, if they got before the first week of June, I'd be surprised. I'm not, because I don't think they can get the budget ready by, before then. They're always last minute on the budget. It's just hard cycle for us to fit it all in, you know.
And then the last question that I had was, this could be a fairly sizable amendment depending on what we end up producing. I know some towns like to just try to put all their eggs in one basket, put it in front of the town and see if they can get it passed. Other towns are, prefer to produce a series of warrant articles that are, you know, piecemeal so that if one of them fails, then the rest of them may not. So I'm curious what your thoughts are on that, it's like I said.
I think breaking it apart is better. It makes it more easily digestible for people to approach one topic at a time. And then it does allow them to pick and choose. I mean, in the past, we brought a variety of articles up and it was kind of hit or miss on which ones passed or didn't. So yeah, I think I'd rather hedge about that way as opposed to putting up one large change that could get shot down in entirety.
Town definitely pays attention to zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
It's not something that they're going to say, oh, whatever.
Yeah. So yeah, we wanted to make sure that we don't feel like we're just trying to overwhelm them so that then they get skeptical of the other work we're doing, so. Piece by piece, I think it'd be safer.
And one of the things that we could do, depends on how the budget works out, but I think we have plenty from that grant. You know, one thing that we could do is, you know, we had in the past, what helps towns not just develop the language for the warrant, but also be available to speak on the topic at town meeting. We've done that before. We prefer to do it in a way where we're just providing information, we're not arguing for or against the changes, but we have that ability to help if there's any questions. I had to do that with, I think I worked with New Braintree on their, their one bylaw back in the day. Say back in the day, it was like nine years ago.
Yeah, exactly.
So we were happy to do that if, if timing the grant allows, so. And it should, because I think we have until the end of June and our major town meeting is going to go down.
Yeah, absolutely.
So those were all my questions. Do you have any questions from me on this?
I, I have one, just in regards to low-impact development. I have an idea what I think that is, what, what the CMRPC believes that low-impact development is.
I hate to say this, but I am a little rusty on what low-impact development means. I would probably need to get back to you on that. Because it's, it's one of those, it's one of those types of bylaws that I didn't work with a ton when I was here before, perfectly honest. And since I'm still getting back up to speed, I'm not quite sure how to answer that. But I can look that, look into that and get you guys an answer.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, because it mentions, you know, to protect the Ware River and then a few lines down on the same page. It states Roots 122, 67, and 32. Well, if you're trying to protect the river, you've got 67 on the east side and 32 on the west side and there's your Ware River right there. That's why I just asked, that's all.
Yeah, and some of those are corridors for density. If you're going to try to, you know, put them around our main roads, again, 32, it's pretty much backed by the Prince River almost the entire way.
Yeah.
So it's one of those, now you get the 200-foot setbacks, so. And a lot of the, you know, development around Berry was around water power, so it's kind of, we get that conflict of interest at this point. And we're going to try to develop some of our main roads. But, but yeah, no, so I mean, if you had some sort of examples for each one of these, we can go through and.
Sure.
Like pictures, language, anything that would help us to get our.
Absolutely. And we do have a number of model bylaws that we've been developing over the years for certain. I'll have to see if we have one for low-impact development. But, you know, one of the things that's happened that I've seen in instances like what you're talking about is, you know, the language gets worked into the bylaw where you've got a certain amount of setbacks, you have a number of requirements for retention and runoff elimination, so that you're minimizing the, the runoff going into the river. So there's things like that that get worked into it, but I don't have any specifics. I'll have to get, dig up some models and see what we have.
I, I, I like the village concept though, just, just the term, just creating a walkable, livable area, because that's what we need. You need something walkable that can connect also to, you know, small store or something like that or the bike trail or, you know, brings people in and they will spend money.
And we definitely do have a number of models on cluster development, village center development.
Chris has a question in the back.
No, I was wondering, if I could come to the table, I brought some props with me. Do a lot of thinking about it.
Slide over.
So some thoughts on the Master Plan Steering Committee. It's all involved in that. But some things I think you should do is, you know, break out this map, by the way, because this is the zoning map, and start looking at it, where are the areas that you want to see more commercial? Where do we want to change it from R15, from an R80, or whatever? Looking at the zoning map, I feel is important for all of you. I had done some research six years ago of all the business, commercial, industrial, zone land in town. So again, this was six years ago, I glanced at it quickly last night. I made one correction, it might be a little bit off, because some things happen. So as of right now, in the center of town, we have seventeen properties that is for a total of 6.64 acres that are zoned commercial. In downtown area, which is down by Wilson Foods, Higgins Power Sports, that's a family business, Noonan's, McDonald's, there's twenty-six properties down there for a total of 113 acres. In South Berry, there's fifteen acres of commercial land, 4.11 acres. In the South Berry Common, down here, there's ten parcels that are zoned, ten acres. There's six other parcels across the town, Rockworks up here, Timmy Graves right here, White, White Turf, Nealon's Bus Barn right there, total of fifty-five acres. And industrial zone property, we have twenty-two properties for a total of 219 acres. So we have 409 acres of land that is commercial and industrial zone in town, right? And then we could want to see how it's all broken down, how all of them.
Awesome.
So who owns it, the plot, you know, what map it is, you know. Back before MASH GIS maps, you know, I got these maps and kind of went through and labeled all who owns what back in town. So it makes it easy, but I think that's important as we try to start looking at zoning, you know, looking at the land, who owns it, you know, back to your statement of wanting a village. Where could it go? Where could it, could it even happen? You know, it's one thing to say it, but let's look at the map, who owns the land, and then decide if it can even be done before we waste all this time. You guys go to town meeting, get it on the warrant, and the property owner's got it written into the will that it's getting donated to Mount Grace, you know. It's like, okay, we just wasted all that time trying to figure out where to add zoning for commercial or, or villages or something like that. So looking at all that, I think is important, looking at these maps, you know, where, you know, housing density, you know, people want their open. So, looking at all that, I think is important, looking at these maps, you know, where, you know, housing density, you know, people want their open space, want it saved, but at some point, there needs to be a little bit of density. Where can it be? Again, looking at this map, picking the areas, looking at the property owners that own the property, can it actually even be done?
Good points.
That's where, and thank you.
Yeah, it is tough, because, I mean, every spot on this map is already something, so if you're gonna try to redevelop what that something is, whether or not we're gonna get, you know, buy-in from the individuals. But, I mean, my main thought is when you try to think of where we're gonna be putting additional houses and then working to higher densities, working off the main roads we already have. I mean, right now, we've, the town of Berry has been inundated over the years with these A and R lots, which have added congestion and traffic on all these back roads. It would've been great to say that you need, you know, do ten acre, fifteen acre individual house lots and have, like, you know, farm zoning out in this area and congregate all the development, residential development in the middle. But, I mean, we're already quite a ways in on the town of Berry getting built out residentially. But, yeah, I mean, I think some of these areas like 32, 122, 62, I mean, most of 62, I guess, is already protected through DCR. 122 out that way is pretty rural towards, well, which way is Peter Sam, this way towards Peter Sam, you know, a lot of that's already been protected heavily from Mount Grace and different areas. But, I mean, I think if we look at our commons and try to think, how could we bring our commons back, I guess, would one, you know, so you look at the zones outside the common for more density, you know, people wanna start putting multifamilies in.
Yeah, like up in here.
Yep.
You know, that area is the land that Bill Guina owns that goes up into here, you know, and someday that could be turned into potentially, you know, should it be R15 zoning?
Yeah. Well, right, if you draw a radius around the common, around South Berry and all those, and then, you know, you flag those densities on them, because they already have a lot of the infrastructure to handle additional people. And, you know, certainly we're not gonna tell people they can't do what they're doing there, but it'd be one of those, at least somebody wants to make a proposal moving forward, because, yeah, we need, there's an urgent need for more residential housing, but we also don't wanna destroy the open space that we have. And nowadays, most people considering the cost of everything are more than happy to rent. So.
Do you guys know if we also have a map that shows at least the general layout of sewer and water in the town?
There isn't. I've seen it, I don't know where to find it, but I've seen it.
Yeah, we do, we have those layers in our, in our GIS, it's available, so if you don't have the printout one, we can provide them for you.
It'd be nice just to add to the.
If it's on GIS, you just pull it off, enter that, right?
Is it MASH GIS, or you're saying you get your own GIS?
So, I mean, we get all our, we get all our layers off of MASH GIS, so we ought to be able to, to at least pull it up there, I don't know if you'll, how easy it is to print off of it.
So, something else, you know, some people may not like it, but, you know, when it comes to affordable housing, everybody's looking and talking affordable housing, we talked about at the master plan committee meetings, affordable housing. You know, we've got one trailer park in town, mobile home communities, you know, there's a bylaw right now for you can't have a mobile home community in town. Is that something that the board should look at? You know, I talked to Paul Burney, they've got sixty-eight units up there, they're busy, they could fill more, he wishes he had more, but the town won't allow it, so.
Oh, so he's maxed out?
He's maxed out, everyone is full.
Yeah, it's a pretty nice little development.
Does he have the land to expand?
Nope, he had originally the land, he just built his house on some of the land, but some of it, when his father got the permits to do it, it was just limited to that. And the thought, he had said one point, again, talk to Paul, but it was like up to 120 units, and his father had only got approved for sixty-eight units. And then now the town bylaws in effect. But, you know, is that something that could come to town to allow him more affordable housing? You know, you're up there, it's 250, there's a nice one, brand new, $250,000 for sale right now, there was other ones for 110, 120, he's been swapping them out. You know, he gets a monthly income that pays for road maintenance, the trash, pays for the taxes of the property, and is that something Berry needs? Just throwing it out there, some people I'm sure not kinda like it, but if they want affordable housing, it's a lot cheaper than a 650,000.
Well, I mean, even like Colbrook with the chalets, I mean, that's a pretty good model for housing, especially for people that don't have kids, young or old. But, that's under the campground, so everybody has to move out for three months.
Yeah, yeah, that's the problem there with that stimulation.
Right, it is, but it's like you could solve that problem by changing the use in that area to be residential, and, you know, trying to figure out how you could make it work for the town, but it is, it does offer affordable housing. Because they keep saying we need more affordable housing, but then the affordable housing they bring forward is four, five hundred thousand dollar homes. So, I mean, there's a pretty big disconnect between, you know, hundred, two hundred thousand dollar homes that would actually be affordable. And the only way you can do that is to try to have probably like a mixed venture between the landowner and like the trailer park, they only own the trailer, so then it's a lease on the land, which would make the upfront costs less. Same thing with Colbrook, the chalets, they buy the chalet, what are they, 60,000 something so far? So they buy in a house for 60, 70,000, but then they're paying the water, sewer, and rental. So, I mean, I think the chalets especially would be, you know, a pretty good option if we could figure out some way to make that work.
The other thing I was gonna ask is, do you all have a housing production plan, was Berry done one, please like?
No.
Not that I know of.
We're doing the, the housing chapter now, so I'm wondering if that's something they'll bring forth.
The MASH, our last meeting, the master plan committee was housing.
Okay, okay. The reason I ask is because we're looking for a few other communities at Chapter 40R zones. And what that essentially is, is there's a certain criteria you can do under 40R, where if you have a certain amount of, of density that you allow, so for single family, I think it's like, is it like 12 units? I don't remember, but it's, it's off the top of my head. You can do this, if you have a housing production plan, if you have a certain amount of those are set aside as affordable, then there's money available from the state to be able to offset the additional costs for all of that. So that's, that's one program we're looking at for the communities, but you have to have, one of the requirements is having a housing production plan in place, or a comprehensive housing plan. I don't know if a comprehensive plan chapter, if a master plan chapter.
Probably not, just like the open space interact is just referenced in the master plan.
And do you have an ADU bylaw?
We do.
Do, okay, and has it been looked at for compliance with?
No, with the new states.
Okay.
No, we haven't.
Not formally, I should say.
Yeah, it was a couple of years before the state ended up implementing there.
I thought I remembered seeing one, but I'm not sure I wasn't speaking. And that's another area, because that law is, does allow for a pretty robust byright accessory dwelling unit construction, basically anywhere in the state now. So, the, if you have a bylaw that's not compliant, then it would, my understanding is that it would default to state regulation, which is you have to allow at least one on every property that's either, you know, half the size of the, of the principal house, or 900 square feet, whichever smaller, there's much of like little regulation, little, little stuff happening.
Yeah, I think ours is 1,000 square feet or less possibly.
Okay.
The other thing, too, with incentivizing dense commercial strips, besides pilot, what, what else would be incentivizing?
So, there, there are a number of programs, I would have to get back with my colleague, my development colleague, to be able to give me more, give us more detail on that, but I can definitely provide all the in-service programs to you.
Appreciate that.
For the next meeting.
Looking at commercials, like commercials, you know, everybody brings up, do we need more commercial space? What are the businesses coming to town? You know, my father owns thirty acres of commercial zone property around the store, and in forty years of owning it, more than that, he's never had anybody ask, hey, can I build a business here?
That's true, I mean, it's all because of our, you know, the geographics here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think in town, I mean, the only commercial tends to be like the martial arts, the dance studios, been there forever, and restaurants, things like that. So it seems like activities, recreation are the, the only things that tend to hang on or fill the space. But, yeah, for somebody to come in and have retail, small retail, things like that, it's just kind of non-existent, seeing everybody just goes online for shopping. But, yeah, it is one of those, like, how do you fill these empty spaces?
Amazon warehouse.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have like the wedding, yeah, right, flunked one of those down, but, you know, so we have Harding Allen Estate, Hartman's Irf Farm, there's a lot of places that do weddings. And one of the issues is, there's not a places for guests to stay, I think closest one is Gardner. And, like, those people go out, they go out to dinner, they probably stay for a couple of days, do some outdoor activities, so they're trying to, how do you make this a place where people wanna live? Because that is, in a sense, what the town of Berry is, is a better community.
Quick question, because I haven't actually thought about it since, I've only been in town like twelve plus years. Does our zoning actually allow for someone to build a hotel? Or is that another thing we gotta pay attention to during this process? Because I just, I know we had one that everybody loved for a while, but I think that preceded the zoning bylaws when it first got built, so I don't know if somebody wanted to come in. Because I know we got a lot of limitations on like.
Yeah, I know they have boarding.
Apartment complex, like, we can't have forty unit apartment complex, but.
Yeah, they need a provision for boarding house, things like that, but that's more of like a bed and breakfast style.
Yeah.
But, uh.
It just might be a note we gotta look at when we're looking at the big picture.
Yep.
Might need to add that in if it's something to consider.
Yeah, so you do have, you do appear to have a motel hotel, a hotel motel or restaurant use allowed under your limited business district zone. But that's the only spa, place that it exists. Oh, wait, maybe one more, I don't know, that's a recommendation.
That one would be better suited for like R80 than battery storage. At least it's still living, some level of living.
Tough to be, get people to go that far out, though.
Yeah, that'd be something R15.
Well, R80 is only my house from the common, so if somebody's just looking for a place to stay in town, it's not too far away.
Yeah, but even still, when you're trying to figure out density for somebody to pop up, you know, you gotta think of, you always have your idealistic view of it as beautiful building, but, you know, you don't want somebody to drop in a stucco, all glass, parking out front, right next to your house. So something like that, it's like if you push it out to the R15.
You don't want a La Quinta?
Yeah. But, yeah, it's one of those where, places to stay where people would come out, spend the weekend, you know, like keeping the campground down at Colbrook, I mean, I'm not sure how busy they are, but they're still there. But, yeah, trying to figure out some sort of opportunities for land use.
Yeah, I was looking through it just now, and I don't see anything in there that specifically allows or necessarily, forget its conversion of housing to bed and breakfast, existing houses to bed and breakfast, but.
Could be boarding.
That could be something to consider, what's that?
I think they do have provision in there, like, for boarding house, and they have a number of people, number of guests you're allowed to keep. So we do have something in that, not specifically bed and breakfast, but we have, maybe that's something to be worth cleaning up.
Yeah, so it's definitely something to consider.
That kinda goes back to like you were saying, historical development versus what you've got zoning now. You might not actually be able to build another Jenkins Inn or where at that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it says the number of unrelated people, six or so.
Yeah.
So there's something in there that could be.
I'll have to look at it and see where it's actually allowed, because that could be something, too, if it's not specifically called out, it may be something that is either considered, considered that it's not allowed.
Yeah, like Airbnb, I guess, be an example, that if somebody had an Airbnb operation, make sure that, because a lot of people would do it for farming, and, you know, if they had a spot on their farm, somebody would come and stay.
Yeah. And you don't, do you have a short-term rental bylaw?
What, like for an Airbnb type rule?
So, and there's a couple of other people, I'm not the only one, but.
Yeah.
Quick question, I recall, and it might be one of the special permit things for one of our residentials, but it, it read something like this. Two-family detached, is that saying you can have two separate families not in the same building, on the same lot? When they're talking like two-family detached, because I didn't understand the, when they said detached, it sounds like, well, that's a separate building, right?
No, it'd be a two-family that's detached from anything else.
Because they need to be.
But how do you get a?
Get into the shared driveway aspect of it, if it's two separate buildings, you'd have a shared driveway.
Yeah.
Right, but I didn't know how you could have a detached two-family, what's it detached from?
Anything else.
Other houses, I don't.
Yeah.
Well, it's got a separate parcel, so you're saying on this parcel, you can have a detached two-family.
Yeah.
But what's it detached from?
Everything else.
Well, no, because if it's connected to water, where it's, it's, the description would be within the bounds of the property, not, or it would say you can't be connected to somebody on another.
Yeah.
No, that's why I'm asking, why is the word used detached, because it confuses me.
Right, but you could have a two-family that's attached to a restaurant or, you know, laundromat, so that, that'd be connected, it's like uptown, all those uses going from the, the coffee shop over to the martial arts, that used to be the thrift, all those, they're like uses. And that's how you can, you know, so that, yeah, they're allowed, they're allowed all to be together, like down IGA, all those are, you know.
But they're all commercial, they're not, they're not the multi-use residential commercial, like, we couldn't do the, currently zoning wouldn't allow residential above commercial.
Yeah, well, where, where I've seen the term detached, like multi-family detached come from, is in places where you have basically row houses or townhouses, like Brownstone's in Boston or something, where like, you've got rows of it, and then you can have a two-family, it's on one lot, but it's not attached to any of the neighboring properties. Here, it doesn't seem like it would factor in, because you don't have row houses here of any kind, but that's the only place I've heard that used.
So that's more kinda like Jimmy's proposal, where he's subdividing, he's getting two families.
Two families, two families.
But, each one's getting its own separate parcel, okay, I got you. Thanks for the clarification.
I think the village of zoning, mixy zoning, that would bring back the residential over commercial, is that the intent of that?
That's one of the, that's one of the possibilities, yeah. So, yeah, and all of those that came, all of the, the things that are in there came out of the, the goals and recommendations from the command itself, so. It's, it's really up to you guys how you wanna interpret that, if you wanna interpret it as residential, village center, that's fine, if you wanna interpret it as mixed use, we would encourage that, because that's something that, that, you know, makes man more valuable, and it makes, you know, makes the, it easier to develop, potentially. But, you know, it's really up to the town how you would like to approach that.
Then I also see require open space in higher density developments, that strikes a chord with us, I mean, isn't that really what NRPC was gonna be?
Yeah, that's what we did try a while ago, I think we just called it open space development, so we're just trying to have a trade-off, and it got a lot of pushback. But in one of those where, I think in hindsight, it would've opened up more development in town, because right now, with the current zoning subdevelopment, it says it discourages development by just making them throw money away. So you can build a bigger road, larger sidewalks, you know, so they, it's just kind of an odd means to protect your open spaces, they were just gonna make it too expensive to develop, but with the open space, the idea was that we reduce development costs in exchange for a number of units, and maybe the unit count was too high for some people. But in general, it gives a lot more flexibility for the developer to come in and sit, you know, cite the houses, put the common driveways in. So that's something that we possibly could revisit and see if, you know, we could, kind of make more inroads there, protect more open space, cut back on the cost of development.
But again, looking at these maps and this map, where can that even be done? You know?
Yeah.
The actual landowners that own the potential properties that could, that could even be done with?
Yeah.
I think if you started looking at this, it's a very small amount.
No, I was, I mean, even when we were going through last time, and I was surprised at how many parcels, like, how few parcels we have in town that are really even over forty, fifty acres. So, the number of properties we have left that could be, you know, developed that aren't already protected are, you know, pretty slim.
Right, I mean, you've already got, this is a fifty-house subdivision down here past the senior center, that's, they haven't done anything with it, but it could be a fifty-plus unit subdivision right there.
Is that by the power lines in that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it? Is it in for, for two or T?
I think, because it's all individual lots, it's already, it's, they're all 40,000 square foot lots. But they're all, so it's not zoned R15 or R20, but.
They came before the plan.
But the public roads hadn't been built yet.
And they said they had to change this design to meet zoning, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's a ten-year window.
They already passed the amount of time?
Well, especially.
So they can't use the 40 any longer?
Yeah. Pretty like a lot of the building we have are, you know, four, five acre lots that they just cut them into two.
Something like that.
And it's one of those, it'd be nice to allow more flexibility in some of our zoning. And it's one of those, it'd be nice to allow more flexibility in some of our zoning, just so, like development, just so we don't end up with these two hundred foot cookie cutter. And a lot of that too, it's like, it's, how much land are we really protecting just by making them destroy more land for one residential unit?
Now, we've, we've seen um, communities have a lot of success with the uh, the, the open space subdivision laws. Uh, we're also looking at um, into model bylaws for uh, cluster development, which um, unfortunately, I can't tell you the difference right now, um, but we have that information, I know one of my colleagues is working on that um, with some other communities. So that's something that we could, I can get information on that, consider that as well.
Yeah, but again, if you look at the, the A, like the, the uh, the way that we've developed in town, I mean, most of our A and R lots, even at this point, have already been developed out.
Yeah.
So it is one of those where you look at what the future impact development for Berry is to some degree, like it's, we need to look at how can we redevelop Berry, cause we're, you know, we really are already pretty well built out, considering how much conservation land we have, that makes it look more rural, so they don't realize it.
One of the big pushbacks, I think, on our prior effort to get that open space cluster development concept was the requirement that that's your only option, not like you could do it this way, or you could do it the traditional subdivision way. Where, that's where the developer's making the choice of, well, I'll spend more on the longer road, I'll do this, because cut and dry, it's not a special permit, it's not whatever, and then the cluster development was a little bit more of a, was it a special permit, or was it just a redefined variation of subdivision, I forget, but.
It would've been the default subdivision, yeah, subdivision, subdivision plans.
I think that was one of the pushbacks was, cause we had some families that just said, I don't wanna have to take thirty or sixty percent of my land and put it into conservation restriction.
Do you have access to how much protected land there is in Berry, G I S maps or something? Could you get that?
We can get that.
For less than, for the master plan committee?
Yeah.
Are one of our next meetings is about open space.
Okay.
And I think a lot of people don't realize how much protected land there is in Berry, when they're driving around, they're just like, oh, that field, I don't wanna ever see a house in that field. Well, the field may already be protected, you're never gonna see a house in it. So back to, you know, a better designation of where everything that is protected, that's never gonna get developed. There's a lot of acres.
And is it the difference between deed protected versus?
Protected land around, surrounding towns are all protected land, there's a lot of protected land in this.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the sixty-one A is, there's a difference between sixty-one A, B, C stuff versus conservation land.
See, I mean, sixty, I've got sixty-nine. Again, ten eight, ten years, I can.
Just change your mind.
I can change my mind, but actual product, you know, protected land, that's whether Mount Race or East Quarterland Trust or N W R A, whatever.
Mast fishing wildlife or something.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot.
Yeah, good D A P R land, so there's quite a bit.
Yeah, we definitely have those layers, we could produce an app for you and something like that, and as a matter of fact, they may already have done it, if you guys are doing your open space.
We did it with CMR PC, so it's already done. I, that's where I thought I'd seen something like that once, where it was on a slide, where they kinda did map that out, but.
Yeah, and I know they updated, um, our, our G I S guy updates them every master plan, so that's definitely one of the standard ones we should have, so I can definitely print out some of that.
And a total amount of acreage, I guess. Figure out the percentages out of that.
Yeah, and I can put that information together and make sure you all have a copy of it before we, before we do again.
Appreciate it, thank you.
That's a lot.
Do you have that stuff there that you put together electronically?
This one?
No.
This, oh, this, that, take that, this is just the town, this is just the.
Oh yeah, just the, the data stuff you're talking about. Would you guys like me to scan this and share it with everybody or send it to Mary?
That would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause I think even on some of these common, when you look at the center, and you try to um, decipher where these boundaries are, it seems like some of that is up to interpretation, even if it says on here that it's, you know, commercial, business commercial, the tax assessor has been probably taxing you as residential, and then you're going back and forth trying to figure out what your zone actually is, so you got what the tax office does and what the map shows, so I mean, if those could be actually cleaned up and probably zoomed in a little more, but um.
Yeah, that's changing, you know, this, this property that my father owns, it's business, it's commercial, it's R twenty and it's R eighty, it's all one lot. And same thing like this industrial zone property that I own over here, I had years ago hired a surveyor to figure out exactly, cause the industrial zone property goes through, like it's two-thirds industrial zone and one-third uh, R fifteen.
Well, that's one thing too, that, uh, cause we had somebody come forward where they had R eighty in the back, R twenty in the front, so they want to do a dog kennel, and um, I think they want to do like doggy daycare or something, but according to the lawyer's interpretation, it, it all depends on the, your access to your frontage. So since they were the R fifteen or R twenty frontage, they'd have to operate through that non-compliant zone to get the dogs to compliant zone. So it is one of those that, for clarification of people, it would be nice if, if some way to flip people's lots over to whatever use makes um, more sense for that lot, just so we don't have these, all these properties that have multiple zones on them.
Okay. Just taking a quick glance here, just wanna make sure that I get the maps that you want, um. Johnson, is that right?
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's always, split lot zoning is heading on all levels. Um, the one way to, to, to treat it is also to, I mean, you could remap it and try to rezone the whole parcels, you could also um, look and see if it makes sense to tweak the, the uses allowed in the zones that are offending, so if there's like, you know, place that's got a dog daycare and in front of its zone doesn't work, maybe you can add that as a protected, as a special use or something. Make it a special permit use, but they'll be grandfathered in or something, I don't know. There's ways that you can, you can tweak the language to make it so that you can uh, you can kinda live with what you've got.
Yep.
Cause it is, it does get complicated to try to like, uh, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying it can be a lot of work to try to figure out what each use is on all these parcels and then adjust the maps, because you all have to take that to town, that's another thing you have to take to town meeting, and then um, it can get real complicated for people very quickly, but we're very much, I'm totally happy to produce the maps you guys are looking for. I will actually check with my G I S guy too, to see, um, we have um, a uh, all of our mapping software is also available online, so we have the ability to put maps up on a website that I can share with you all, so you know, you can zoom in and look at the parcels like when you wanna, like when you're, like before the meetings, when you're doing your homework before the meetings.
That'd be really nice, where you can really dive in and out.
Um, I can see about, if we can put the layers on there with the, the parcels, the zones, um, conservation lands. Um, and usually with that program, if you click on the lots, it'll tell you what, we can attach the record to it, so you can see who the, the ownership is. Um, so that way, feel like you were saying, if it's, you happen to look at it and see it's a big parcel and you're like, oh, this would be great for cluster development, but we know, you know, Mr. Johnson is gonna, you know,
Not interested.
Yeah, they're gonna put it in conservation as soon as they, you know, and so you know that's gonna happen. Um, you know, my mother-in-law has, has a piece of property out in Connecticut, and she's got the entire thing, you know, under the equivalent of chapter land out there. So like, you can build two buildings on it, that's it. But it's like a hundred and eighty acres, we look at it on a map, you'd be like, wow, this is great for a subdivision, it's like, nope, that's why she did it, she didn't want the subdivision.
Yeah, even if, even if there's a map that didn't separate them all out, cause a lot, a lot of times you look at one that'll have green, yellow and whatever, so you're looking at all, and you're looking at the, the key, but if, yeah, you just had a map that even just showed all the land that was no longer eligible for development, just kind of one color. So you just clump them all together, so then you can see what is actually um, flexible use.
Yeah, that's definitely uh, possible, we've done that before um, for communities, so. It's a little, we, we'll probably, I'll talk to them about it, I know there's some nuance around the edges, there's definitely things like, you know, if it's absolutely, if it's in like a conservation in perpetuity, obviously it can't be developed, if it's, you know, the slope's got really good land for development, you can take that out. But then there's like sort of gray area, things about certain types of chapter land where, you know, you can flip it anytime, all you have to do is pay your back taxes and you can go ahead and develop.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really consider the sixty-one A necessarily protected, but we're thinking of like A P R land that they've actually signed a legal document, their development rights have been, so like, pretty much any properties with development rights have been removed. And that would be something to show people when they're trying to think of the development pressure that the town of Berry is under. Cause yeah, I mean, right, like,
Absolutely.
There is just such a huge demand for affordable living, and it's one of those that, like Chris was saying, with the trailer park, it's a great way to get people in, because they're not upfront paying for septic land, they just have to afford the unit they're putting down, and um, yeah, at least you know that one individual is maintaining the, the property, so then you don't kind of have these smaller houses where you get neighbors, some people hoarding, some people taken care of, and that's one thing when you talk about density, and it's always, well, what's the character of the parcel gonna be? And when you break that character up between thirty-something people, but um, yeah, some of these where the individual, like Goldbrook owns the property, they maintain the property. So you have one individual liable for appearances, things tend to get maintained a little better.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that, um, does the, when did the town, you know, off the top of your head, when the town um, changed the, the bylaws to disallow mobile home parks, or?
That was ages ago, this one, this one was the only one allowed, and that was beyond the standing.
That was banned right after that.
Yeah, right after that.
There's a bunch that were pre, I mean, we have quite a few trailer homes around town that were all pre-existing.
Yeah, Marco Commerce.
I mean, Bluzzy Mattson bought one, it's uh, value right.
Well, there, just up by passits.
Yep, that one, yeah, pre-existing, so there's a bunch are pre-existing, most of them been removed and developed into actual, you know, conventional housing. But it is, yeah, and I don't think the individual, like I think more of like um, parks, like they have up at Water Wheel, would be an appropriate way to allow um, you know, the mobile homes back in, not on individual lots. But um, but I think somehow, like again, Goldbrook, like somehow allowing for these smaller, more dense units under some sort of a independent zone, if you call it like a community zoning, where the individual owns the property in perpetuity and he just sells the, the rental rights of the land. That might be one way to get some density in, it might be more palatable to people, because they know that the property is gonna be held um, you know, in a contiguous parcel.
Okay, something to consider.
Yeah, we got a year ahead of us.
Yeah.
Plenty to do.
It's gonna go fast though.
Oh, it's gonna be a blink and it's like, oh, so we only got this far.
Yeah, I know, that's, we have to work to keep that going up.
Yeah, and there's one thing too, like I think we have um, gravel operations in multiple places in our zoning bylaws, that's one thing that we've run into in the past.
Do you have any active gravel operations in town?
Uh, yeah, kind of, a couple, I mean, is McDonald's still running, or did he complete his?
Did they finish about, I feel like they finished that one.
Is it, they've, I don't know if they've ever signed out of it though, have they? Yes, I mean, it's still in theory in operation.
They have a lot of turnover.
I haven't even been through that. Town of Berry wants one, um, they haven't come forward to that yet.
And so you're, the issue that you're, you would like to look at is allowing it, or?
Nope, it's allowed, just consolidate in the regulations. I think it'd be easier if somebody just goes into a gravel operation instead of saying, well, you got this little piece here, you got this little piece here.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I guess cleaning up, I guess we should go through all our uses, cause I think in the past too, we were surprised when you look into certain uses, what is or isn't allowed. So I think we need to re, you know, revisit the allowed uses in all of our zones to make sure that they're um, keeping up with the changing times, because.
And I know one of the recommendations um, from the first pass of the zoning diagnostic that we did, um, was to consider adding a separate use table chapter to it, or at least putting all of the uses in each chapter into a use table. Um, I don't know if that's something that you.
Does it make it easier versus a narrative, is that what you're saying, it kinda just says if you're here, and it just, under that is a column of just things you can do?
So it's like, this is, this is the use, this is the zone, is it, is it allowed, if so, is it special permit, and that's basically how.
Yeah, cause right now it says, um, all uses allowed in, you know, current zone, except for, you know, ten B, so then you're like, well, now you're gonna flip back through the book, and you're reading these ones, and then you get this one, now you're flipping back to this page, so if it was pretty much just commercial industrial, this is what's allowed. There's no reason to reference, it's not that much more to just relist it.
Yeah, that's something that we definitely help with.
Back then, paper was a little more expensive, I guess, so they didn't wanna.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, but uh, we've all the cheese around the back.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
See you around.
One, one, one interesting thing, I don't know if it'd be necessarily appropriate for Berry, but they have more like co-housing models where, so in some, if you could figure out some way to keep residential affordable enough, and I think um, there's a mall they redeveloped down in Rhode Island, so there are a bunch of units, and I think they just didn't put kitchens in, because the kitchen would make it a residential unit, so they just put like a sink and a hot plate, so you could still cook, but in general, it was a living room, bedroom, bathroom. But that's how they redeveloped up above a mall, but some things like that, if you're gonna do some high-density zoning, I mean, kids nowadays don't cook anyway, so what are you just wasting? But that's a kind of an interesting idea, that if you're gonna do a density zoning, like they're gonna redevelop the lighthouse block, then something like that, where they could have them be more of like a co-housing.
No, and that's been, that's been a thing that's been coming up a lot, um, you know, when I was working in DC, that obviously the, the development is very, very different, but what you would see is that it's not technically allowed, because they've never addressed it in the zoning code. So what people were doing is they were buying these row houses, and they were converting them into uh, three units within one row house, and then they were saying like, oh, it's one apartment, but it's got five bedrooms, and they all go upstairs, and there's like a little hot plate in each one, and we're like, I can't legally say no. But it's, it's that, that's a model that's becoming much more, much more accepted and much more in demand. You know, and you have places where you have these uh, older, um, you know, Victorian houses where you know, like people who, who inherit them aren't able to, to maintain them anymore, that could be an option. Um, if you have some sort of a legal code that says, okay, if you're doing, a number of people live there, you don't have to be owner occupied necessarily, or however you wanna handle it. It's definitely something that we'll consider, it's a little bit different than, you know, a bed and breakfast or a boarding house.
Yeah, and that's gotta be with the uh, like the Airbnb, if people want to try to develop that, so it's not quite a hotel, it's not quite a residential unit, but it's kind of this middle ground, where if that sort of, um, you know, Berry gets more tourism, people coming out for weddings. So I mean, it's, it's one, one possible um, strategy to.
And I'm not even sure there's interest in town, but when, when back to mixed use, the whole concept, I was thinking is like, if you put commercial on the bottom, that actually requires employees. Well, it's the employees that are living above, and so that's why the owner of the property can make it off where it's like, all right, I give you two hundred bucks a month, a week, and you get a place to live. You know, or vice versa, I'll give you your paycheck, but you've gotta pay me a reduced rent, and however an owner would do it, and so I don't know if that type of style would have to be described or zoned to make it as an option, rather than someone trying to figure out how to make that work. I don't know how that, how that's defined when it comes up, is it a boarding house technically, mixed use concept, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you would word it so that you would be able to limit it to that type of use, where it's just employee housing.
I, I don't wanna say it's just, I just meant I wanna make sure that it could be so that each unit could literally just be like a bedroom with a, you know, a true, I forget what those bedrooms are, where it's bedroom, kitchen, bathroom.
Studio.
Thank you. But even smaller, you know, just enough so that literally it, you've got a place to stay, you're surviving. Don't get me wrong, but I know when I was younger, that was like the ideal way to get started with things, and just get me out of my house with my parents into a place, that allowed me to start building up an account to then move out to a different spot. But I just didn't know if those are even, like I said, I don't know if anybody'd be interested, but.
I don't know what they're, what they define, they, that, it sounds like what you're talking about is what you would've been called, you know, twenty years ago, the single resident occupancy. Like kind of hotel, but they were, you know, outlawed basically everywhere in the seventies and eighties. I think Worcester's probably the last city I know of that actually has a functioning one, Hotel Vernon downtown, which is, that is a wild place, but anyways.
Yeah, I think they had one over in uh, North Hampton, they did redevelop recently. Yeah, I think, they had one over in, uh, North Hampton, they did redevelop recently.
I don't know that.
And that was one of those, they're saying that was kind of filling that, you know, that, um, low-income housing for people that are, you know, in temporary even transition from one, you know, you're renting one house or downsizing, it's extended, it's long-term, you know, you're there for three, four months maybe, but a lot of times, yeah, they fall into the, um, drug use and things like that, ends up kinda giving them a bad name, or you get people that are pseudo-homeless, and I think that's why they got such a bad reputation of transients.
But I mean, we, we, like, I, I lived in one of those when I worked in Block Island, um, decades ago, and I don't even think we had kitchens, I don't even think we had hot plates in our, our rooms. It was just literally like a bedroom, it was like nine bedrooms above a grocery store, and like, I worked in the grocery store and I went upstairs and slept and.
Yep.
You know, but there was like, you know, restaurants and stuff everywhere, so.
Right, and I think with the thing, when you have, um, that sort of living style, again, where you have the coffee shop down below, the restaurant around the corner, you know, grocery store in walking distance.
Yeah.
So then it's, yeah, you're not going grocery shopping for a week and cooking large meals, you're kind of doing more food prepping, eating out.
Yeah.
Air fryer.
You know, you can do a lot.
Yeah?
Of course, it needs investors to come to Berry.
Yeah.
I bought, we bought a.
Was that lady, call her up?
I talked to her, right?
You want an Instant Pot that has an air fryer in it, and it's the best thing I've ever had, you can do all three, you can do pressure cook, you can do slow cook, you can air fry in the same thing, fantastic.
Yeah.
Use it all the time.
They're great.
All right, is that all we got?
Um, yeah, that's it for today, um, I have a pretty good laundry list of things, uh, to send to you guys, um, and uh, we will, I'll be in touch with you about the, being on the agenda for, um, a date in September.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Rod.
All right, just make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.